Good morning. The Committee of the Whole is called to order, but we would just stay on recess until we have a quorum. All right? Thank you. Good morning and thank you again. The Committee of the Whole is called to order. We do have a quorum. My colleagues, we have completed all discussion on Committee of the Whole. I recognize now Senator Rigel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill Number 327-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, and Bill Number 298-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, be placed on the third reading file.
Thank you, Senator Rigel. Are there any objections to rise from the Committee of the Whole? There being none, we will now be on recess. We will rise from the Committee of the Whole.
Good morning, colleagues. We are back from, we're back in session, back from recess. We would now recognize Senator Sin Augustin. You are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body after deliberation on Bill 327-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriations and Housing and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, and Bill 298-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriations and Housing and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole to place on the third reading file.
On the motion to accept the recommendations of the Committee of the Whole and place Bills 327-36 COR and Bill 298-36 LS on the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill Number 291-36 LS. Senator Nelson.
Madam Speaker.
Senator Sin Augustin, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I ask that notwithstanding the House rules, we move back to motions. And that Bill 291 be set aside?
All right. On the motion to set Bill Number 291-36 aside, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. On the motion to go back to motions, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now in motions. Senator Sin Augustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government Operation, Approaching, Appropriations and Housing, the nomination of Robert S. Jack to serve as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission with the recommendation to do confirm.
All right. The motion is to place it on the, place his nomination on the agenda first.
Yes.
Senator Sin Augustin, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Is there any objection to the motion to place the nomination of Dr. Robert S. Jack as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission onto our session agenda under legislative concurrence? Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still under motions. Senator Sin Augustin, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 351-36 COR on the session agenda. Bill Number 351-36 COR is an act to add a new Article 6 to Chapter 8 of Title 12, quote, "Relative to creating a virtual power plant program." Correction, as amended in the committee.
Motion is to place Bill Number 351-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities and the Arts, onto the second reading. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're going to take a one-minute recess. We're back from recess. Thank you, colleagues. We're still on motions. Are there any other motions? Senators Sin Augustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move, I motion to place Bill 358-36, as introduced by myself, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriations and Housing, an act to authorize the extension of the Gas Tax Relief Act for another 180 calendar days and to authorize Imaga Haga and Guan to spend up to no more than $5,157,000 from the general fund and/or fiscal year 2022 general fund revenues collected in excess of adopted levels to cover the financial impacts of the Gas Tax Relief Act, onto the session agenda.
On the motion to place Bill Number 358-36, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing, onto the second reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. And we're still on motions. Are there any other motions? If not, then we, Senator Duñez, on motions.
Sí, sí, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, at this time, I would like to be recognized, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Haga and Guan, to move for reconsideration of Bill 1136.
Would you like to discuss?
And I would like to discuss it.
Please proceed.
Sí, sí, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, a few days ago, the governor put out a new executive order extending the public health emergency. In this executive order, Madam Speaker, the governor recognized that the national emergency was scheduled to end in January, I believe January 11th. As I've been following the news nationally, there is more than likely going to be an attempt, or maybe an executive order by the President of the United States to continue to extend the public health emergency, perhaps to April, perhaps to June of 2023. And in the governor's executive order, it does not definitively say that the emergency will end on the 11th. It says that in some likelihood or some sort of language associated with that. Madam Speaker, I think that in my conversations with the general public and just seeing the attempts by our island to emerge and having emerged from the pandemic, with all of the election that, activities that we just had recently, with numerous functions of mass crowds getting together, of all of the concerts and activities, I think they may have even broke the record on the Japan festival down in Ipao. I believe, as I've spoken to many people in the community, that many believe that this public health emergency is over and has been over for some time. Madam Speaker, once again, we come down to ask ourselves the question, why? As of my latest research, Madam Speaker, and I can provide it to the committee, I believe there are only four or five states that are still, and even by this date may have, their public health emergencies may have expired. And even those, Madam Speaker, I believe there was only one state that had the complete iteration of their public health emergency. Every other emergency, Madam Speaker, was tailored to the necessities of their community. Now, I know, Madam Speaker, some have continued to, particularly towards myself, and that's okay, I can take it, accuse me of trying to take food out of the mouths of families who receive SNAP benefits, of not recognizing the National Guard and the efforts in terms of what they do and have done throughout the pandemic. And I think that every single member of this body has consistently, on any occasion, even when we came down here to consider ending the public health emergency, has done nothing but congratulate and appreciate every single frontliner's effort to include the guard, to include the hospital, to include nurses, public health, the list goes on, public safety. But, Madam Speaker, let's be clear. In all the research that I have done, there is not one penny of federal dollars that could be lost if we followed our proper emergency protocols and tailor an emergency to whatever the specific needs of the community is. Madam Speaker, in recent, we've seen audits from the public auditor that show very disturbing incidences of procurement and expenditure of federal dollars not in compliance. We've seen contracts that are extremely questionable that have been canceled. And I can only speculate, Madam Speaker, that most of this activity has happened because procurement and the open government law are not required to be adhered to in many cases under this public health emergency. Madam Speaker, we have precious resources that are left with regard to the American Rescue Plan. And I hope, I hope the final gift that this legislature can give to the people of Guam in December as we close out this session is to end this public health emergency and move to regular order of things so that we can have full transparency and accountability when it comes to the expenditure of these precious resources, these several hundred million dollars that are left in rescue plan monies. Once again, I know we constantly have to go through this, and it's okay, because repetition and communication is very important when we do things of significance or even not of significance. If we override the veto of the governor on Bill 11, it will not end the public health emergency. But if we go into January, the new year 2023, and the January 11th date arrives, and the governor wishes to extend the public health emergency, there will be a requirement for the administration to come down to this august body and make a presentation to the people of Guam as to why we need to continue this public health emergency. There will be a public hearing, Madam Speaker, so that people can come in and voice their concerns, businesses that may feel that they're still constrained under some circumstances or believe that they want a competitive environment by which they would compete for the last of the resources that may be under procurement and not do so under an emergent situation where they may feel there'd be a disadvantage. This is the right way to run our government, Madam Speaker. I don't believe, under any circumstances, when the emergency health powers were issued over 20 years ago, it was ever envisioned that the island of Guam would be in a public health emergency for over two years. And even if that were necessary, I believe that most, even the drafters, believed that there would be some sort of check and balance in the system. But I believe most of us in this hall, or at least a good portion of us, believe that that hasn't been true, at least for the last 18 months. So I ask my colleagues, help me start to look at and review the emergency health powers and to start with at least this one very practical change. I want to be part of the solution, Madam Speaker. I think we want to be part of the solution. I pray that our colleagues that are coming in in the 37th Guam Legislature want to be want to be part of the solution when dealing with difficult problems in our community. But you cannot be a part of a solution if you don't have a seat at the table. In closing, Madam Speaker, I remember when we were going through the process of at least entertaining a resolution to end the public health emergency, that many of the great officials that came down and sat before us said, "In order to transition out of a public health emergency, there will be requirements and necessities to be prepared for by the administration and by this legislature." Madam Speaker, have you received one proposal to carry on a program that would be vital to our community, one piece of legislation, one letter of recommendation, one list enumerated by our great colleagues and our friends who run the executive branch? If you have, it hasn't been shared with me. So is the lack of preparation an emergency on our part? It shouldn't be. So maybe the least we would do by overriding Bill 11, if emergencies are to continue, get information in this hall of what is needed. What programs will suffer, and why? But if we're going to sit and wait and speculate, it's just not a way to run a government. It's not true service to the people, Madam Speaker. I hope my colleagues can see the wisdom in this very, as far as I'm concerned, transparent, check and balance, move to end this term and start the new term of the legislature with a clean slate. With a clean slate to say, "We're done with that, we're moving forward, and if we really want to work together, then work with us. Join us every 30 days if you need to continue, and if not, Madam Speaker, if it does expire, thank God, on January 11th, then never again will we face this situation where we're stuck in this, if a god-awful pandemic were to plague us again, or some sort of other emergency or calamity, that we would at least have collaboration, cooperation, checks and balances, and transparency in the process." I think that's the least we can deliver to our people. So I humbly ask my colleagues to consider, notwithstanding the objections of Imago Hagan Guahan on Bill 1136, please give us sufficient votes to override the governor's veto. Sí, 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 Madam Speaker.
Sí, 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 on the motion, notwithstanding the objections of Imago Hagan Guahan to place veto Bill Number 11-36 in the voting file, are there any members who would like to speak on that motion? Senator Brown, you are recognized on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have to tell you, I don't know how many times I've stood on this floor this term to speak in favor of Bill 11, certainly when it was first introduced and brought before the body. I appreciate the continued efforts of my colleague Senator Duñez to push this issue forward, because I know when he ran for office two years ago, this was first and foremost on his agenda with regards to the issues he was seeing in our community, and as he mentioned, the lack of check and balance between the legislature and the executive branch. I've often said, you know, the silence here sometimes is almost deafening, because if the situation were reversed, and I'll go back four years now, hard to believe how quickly time flies, the amount of criticism the members of this legislature had for the outgoing Calvo Tenorio administration. Every little move was scrutinized, whether there was validity to it or not. And now the equation has changed, and we have a Democratic governor. We still have a Democratic majority in the legislature, and we don't really hear very much from our Democratic colleagues with regards to accountability in the administration, especially at a time, as I've mentioned before, when our government and the people, on behalf of the people, has received more money from the federal government than we ever have in any fiscal year of what we now know as the government of Guam. You would think that would be a standard requirement. You would think there would be more noise in this hall asking, "How is this money being spent?" You know, a recent example, the Guam Visitors Bureau, you know, the Camacho Ada team was attacked. Sorry, my colleague here, Senator Ada, but I'm going to speak here. If I'm out of line, by all means, let me know. But they were attacked because they had mentioned that there was a certain amount of money, was it $13 million or $20 million, if I recall, that had already been encumbered by the Guam Visitors Bureau. And the head of the Guam Visitors Bureau, Governor Carl Gutierrez, publicly came out and said, "We have not spent $20 million. That is inaccurate information." So I guess we're to assume that Camacho Ada was inaccurate with regards to the figures that they publicly stated. The irony of it all, Madam Speaker, is the governor's office issued that information that indicated, that showed clearly, you know, in the simple layout that they provide for the legislature and the public, that that money had already been expended. So who's wrong? And who's right if we're not properly keeping track of that kind of money? You know, maybe a few cents here or there, we don't know. But millions and millions and millions of dollars, I mean, yes, it's on a spreadsheet, and yes, you have many hundreds of millions of dollars, but wow, that's a big oversight. And that was information that was publicly provided. And that's all we get, Madam Speaker. And the sound in the legislature is deafening, because there's not too many other people here, other members of this body, demanding to know how the public money is being spent. I don't know about you, but you know, I watch the news, I listen to the radio, I watch TV, and I see the constant running of commercials before the election and even after the election, the same programs, over and over and over, every 10, 15, 20 minutes, over and over. And then I'm counting, gosh, how much do those ads cost? I'm sure all of us have some familiarity, how much a commercial costs on the radio or on TV to be aired, because, you know, we have to run our own campaign ads. Money that could be going into these programs for the limited time they have left, but no, we need to continue to spend. And yet the silence here continues to be deafening, because we already know the equation, Madam Speaker, of which senators here will align themselves consistently, whether they're Republican or Democrat, which senators in this hall consistently align themselves with the administration. The only time I've ever answered any governor of Guam, Madam Speaker, is when I've actually worked for one. I don't work for one now. I don't think when we ran to go out in this most recent election, did we tell the people of Guam, "Please elect me to office because I want to be the tentago for the governor." I didn't hear that. But then again, sometimes we're not so revealing to the public of what our true motives and agendas are, even in the ongoing leadership of the incoming legislature. Who's going to be the tentago for the administration? Which speaker's going to be the tentago for the administration? That's who we should vote for. You know, in all my years in the legislature, and it's been quite a few, I've never seen this kind of nonsense to this degree. We tell the people of Guam that we're there to represent them, to represent their interests, to protect their interests, to ensure accountability in the government, to ensure that the resources of the people ultimately go and return to the people. But in this case, with something so flagrantly in our face, we don't do that. We don't demand to know that. We continue to pass budgets without even demanding to know how the public federal money that's been given to our people, provided on their behalf, has been spent by the administration. You know, we look at our democratic system of government, oh, the three branches of government are supposed to equalize everything so that we don't ever have any one branch being supreme over the other. In this particular case, with hundreds of millions of dollars of the people's money, that's exactly what's happened. You have the executive who has the rein to spend the money, and overall, in terms of the body of the legislature, we've not stood up with a mandate to say, "You have to spend that money properly, and by the way, we want to know, and the people of Guam need to know, how that money is being spent." We have abdicated every single month that this public health emergency has been in place, the responsibility of this legislature to ensure the proper expenditures of public funds. Every single month that has gone by, and the administration comes back and says, "Oh, but if you don't do this, this program and this program's not going to be covered." And as Senator Duñez mentioned, there are processes in other jurisdictions under which those programs are still being implemented without having an overall public health emergency. I think we all understand the dynamics of what happened during the pandemic. We've all lived through it. I think we're grateful, hopefully, that it's not something we'll have to experience to that degree in our lifetime, hopefully. But this is not how governments should run. And you know, Madam Speaker, when the curtains get taken down, and the curtains will start coming down, the election's over, in the next year or two, let's see where we're at, when all the ugly comes to surface. But for colleagues, and we know who we are, who have consistently voted against this bill, we don't tell the people that when we're out there asking for their support, when we're out there patting each other on the back and smiling, and, "Hey, thank you, man primo, I appreciate it. Thank you for your support. Please vote for me. Please be humble, my dear people of Guam, and give me that one vote. If you can spare it, please consider voting for me." We don't tell them what we're doing behind closed doors, that when you really get down to the brass tacks, we're not transparent. We don't demand accountability in this government because we allow this nonsense that has been going on for almost three years to go on. Be it Republican or Democrat, this legislature has an obligation to address the finances of this government. That's why we exist, Madam Speaker. Those are the only two key things we need to do. Address policy and pass the budget for this government. If we ever need to look at our job description, that's really, really all it is. And a big chunk of that, we've abdicated responsibility to do that. We've acquiesced, and we have no clue. And I'm sure in the months and years ahead, we're going to hear about the misspending and the rumors about who got what contract, and who's going to get the next contract. Because running for office is about getting the spoils of war, to get our hands on the resources of the people so that we can use it, manipulate it, and maybe make it to our advantage. Maybe it's a family member that gets a job, maybe it's a family member that gets a contract or a close friend, and oh, that's okay, man, that's what it's all about. That's not what we tell the people. "Or, Lana, maybe I'm going to get that next appointment, the governor's going to appoint me." I have no hope, and I wish I could tell my dear colleague Senator Chris that I think there's going to be a miraculous awareness of this current body. Because you know, sometimes our people, maybe not at the first, but next few months, next year, I'd be, "How come we, I don't know, we voted for that person, and look what they did," and they're upset after the fact. After the fact. But I don't hold my breath that the colleagues here, and we know who they are, they know who they are. We can count them on our fingers, which ones will always align with the administration. It makes you wonder, who are they beholden to? I'm hopeful, though, that in the next legislature, I'm hopeful, if some of our new incoming senators that have said, you know, "They're here for the people, the party we leave at the door after the election, we're here for the people." Well, we'll see. We will see. Hopefully, and I'm sure Senator Chris will reintroduce this bill, and I'm hopeful that the next legislature, anticipating a veto of the governor, will override this bill and put it into law so that this becomes a standard requirement in a public health emergency for any governor and any future legislature. Absolute power, Madam Speaker, corrupts because there is no check, there is no balance, and there is no review. We know what's going on, and yet we do nothing about it. We continue to pass budgets without ensuring and accounting how federal money is being spent, or where we can offset that local dollar, so there are other critical programs that are not funded by the federal government that can be invested in, but we don't do that. We just go about our day, aren't we so important, us dear senators, our dear, my dear, my dear people of Guam? I think time has shown that not just the last legislature that led to the frustration of some of us who chose to run again, but continues in this legislature. So we'll see. But I'm hopeful, I'll still remain hopeful, that the incoming legislature, the incoming senators, because they're going to be on the other side of the aisle, we've got a couple new on ours, will vote for this bill and realize the importance that we shouldn't just talk the talk. Talk is easy and talk is cheap. It's easy to talk. The doing, the heavy lifting, the standing in the face of adversity, then we can talk. Then there's something there you've got to show, because I don't see it here. And thank goodness, there is an election process. Thank goodness, we get to change our leaders and put new ones in, or rearrange, whatever we choose to do as a people. Because there's no rational reason that this bill has not passed. Because I'll tell you, I bet if Eddie Calvo was still up there as governor, oh my goodness, I bet this would have passed with lightning speed. But sometimes, Madam Speaker, you just need to wait till the curtains get lifted, and they will. It's inevitable, it happens every administration, every term. And then we're going to wonder, why weren't we more responsible with how the people's money is being spent? Why didn't we demand greater accountability of how the people's money? Why did we abdicate our responsibility with regards to ensuring how the people's money is being spent? Why is that so difficult? Why is it so difficult to request the administration with all their resources to come down here before the people and account for their actions and their justifications of why a public health emergency should be continued? Why? While there's occasional oversight hearings in this legislature, there's been so few. There's a lot of things we've let slide. Why? You've got to ask yourself that question. Who's benefiting from this? Sad reality is, ultimately, it's not going to be our people benefiting from this. It's going to be others. Probably others that, if they're not following the proper path, are undeserving to begin with of getting whatever it is they're getting. But colleagues, you have to carry that. You know, we all have to carry the responsibilities of our actions and our decisions, and then it's the people to judge. So I'm hopeful, Senator Chris, that we'll try again. We'll try again in the incoming legislature, because I think persistence will pay off. I think good legislation ultimately will go in place and be adopted by this legislature. Because as time goes on, it's very difficult to sustain what has occurred here. Because I don't know, I mean, last time I checked, I thought we worked for the people. I thought that's what we told them when we ran for office, that we were here to work for them, not a governor, or any governor, or any administration, unless you happen to be employed by them directly, then by all means. But for this legislature, shame on this legislature, shame on the last legislature for not taking its responsibility. Why do we bother running for office and coming and sit to be in this legislature to abdicate half of our work? Because we don't do proper oversight. We don't demand accountability, we talk about it, but we don't do anything to ensure it. Shame on this legislature, and shame on our colleagues for not upholding the priority and the interest of our people. With that, Madam Speaker, I have nothing further to add to Bill Number 11 in this current legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, notwithstanding the objections of Imago Hagan Guahan to place veto Bill Number 11 in the voting file, is there any other member who would like to speak? If there's no other member who would like to speak, are there any objections on the motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions. Senator Sanagusin, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I request to withdraw the motion to add Dr. Robert Jack, because I just been advised it has been loaded, I think it was...
On that motion to withdraw the nomination of Dr. Jack from the agenda temporarily, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to place on the session agenda Bill Number 254-36COR, introduced by Senator Talina Nelson, Amanda Shelton, Clinton Rigel. It's an act to add a new chapter to Division 2 of Title 17 Guam Code Annotated, relative to defining the educational and professional requirements for certified school counselors, and to authorize the compiler of laws to make changes.
On that motion, is there any objection? Is that an objection, Senator Tactically?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it's also...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it's also, it's an objection as well as just a point of information that the acting superintendent right now is trying to schedule a meeting with the senator, discuss some of the issues. And I noticed most especially that on the committee report, the round table that was held in May at 5:00 PM in the evening was not included into the committee report, which provided very important information with regards to the schools counselor, as well as nothing from Department of Administration. So I have to, you know, respectfully object to this, as the committee report is not complete, as well as a text message I received that acting superintendent is trying to get ahold of the senator with regards to major concerns in the bill. Thank you.
All right. So there's been an objection to the placement of Bill Number 254-36COR on to the second reading. All those in favor, please raise your hand for the placement of Bill Number 254-36. Motion fails. Speaker Terlali, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a motion to add Bill Number 356-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. This is a bill introduced by myself. It's an act to amend Section 12801B, 12803C15, 12805A23910, 12805J3AB, 12802A1112, 121906, 122106, and to repeal and reenact 12101G, 12101N, 12101P, 12101V, 12802A13713, 12802B3, 12809, 12819, 12827, 12901, 12902, 12102, 122104, to add a new section 12901.1, section 12906, 121504.1, all of these of Chapter 12 of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, and to repeal existing Guam allied health examiners rules and regulations pertaining to the practice of acupuncture superseded by new rules relative to approving the adoption of comprehensive new rules and regulations for the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners.
On the motion to place Bill Number 356-36 on the agenda, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Are there any other motions? Seeing no other motions, we proceed with the second reading. Back on Bill Number 291-36LS, Senator Nelson. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to set Bill 291-36 aside at this time.
To the bottom of the agenda?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion to set Bill Number 291-36LS to the bottom of the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Bill Number 299-36LS, Senator Torres, you are recognized. We'll take a one-minute break. We're back from recess. Again, colleagues, we are on Bill Number 299-36LS. Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 299-36LS, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, introduced by myself and Senators Nelson, Talina Cruz-Nelson, Teresa M. Terlali, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Sabina F. Perez, Amanda L. Shelton, Jose Pedro Terlali, James C. Moylan, Christopher M. Duñez, V. Anthony Ada, Joe S. Sinagastin, and Frank Blos Jr. into the third reading file. This is an act to add a new section 13301.1 and section 13301.2 to Chapter 13, Title 19 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring reasonable efforts to preserve and reunify families, and to establishing circumstances negating requirement for such reasonable efforts, and to amend section 13320A through F of Chapter 13, Title 19 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to updating disposition hearing requirements, and to amend section 13324 of Chapter 13, Title 19 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to updating the timelines for the permanent placement of children, and to further add a new section 4303B6 and section 4303B7 and section 4303D to Article 3, Chapter 4 of Title 19 Guam Code Annotated, relative to terminating the parental rights of a parent who subjects a child to aggravated circumstances. And I wish to speak on the matter further.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill 299 was years in the making. Its long journey began with a simple but difficult question. When does a child's safety trump a parent's right? It's the same question Mrs. Helen Middlebrook asked, a former foster parent and a papercolonist who came before this body to share her story of two adopted sons, children that remained in the foster care system for over 14 years, children who, because of their birth parents and our broken system, suffered permanent impact to their health and development. To me, and I'm sure to many others, the answer to this question has always been clear. The safety of the child must always take priority. But that's not what our laws say. Currently, the Child Protective Act does not specify when efforts to reunify the family are no longer required, nor does the law clearly state when a petition for the termination of parental rights must be filed by Child Protective Services. This means that if the parent sexually abused their child, murdered the child's sibling, or caused serious bodily injury, their parental rights may not be terminated, resulting in hundreds of children lingering in our foster care system for years. Bill 299 would completely change this in two fundamental ways. First, it would include aggravated circumstances as grounds for terminating parental rights. In other words, if a parent engaged in physical or sexual abuse of the child, a felony assault that resulted in serious bodily injury, attempted murder or manslaughter, CPS must file a petition to terminate parental rights. Second, the bill would update Guam's timeline for permanency placement to comply with present federal standards. Under the Adoption and Safe Families Act, which is U.S. Public Law 105-89, state welfare agencies must first file a petition to terminate parental rights when a child has been in foster care for 15 of the most recent 22 months, in order to receive federal reimbursement for foster care, adoption, and kinship guardianship assistance. This is also known as Title 4E funding. Guam law does not have this requirement, therefore losing out on potential federal funds towards local foster care. As a result, Bill 299 would require CPS to petition the court for termination of parental rights if the child has been under its care for over a year. But recognizing those nonviolent parents who are trying to get their life together, Bill 299 also provides an exception. For example, under section 4303D, Child Protective Services may elect not to terminate the parental rights if the child's parent is in treatment, or if the family of the child has not been provided the services that is deemed necessary within the time period of the service plan. At the public hearing, Bill 299 received support from the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the Bureau of Women's Affairs, and members of the foster and adoptive parent community. CPS, who co-authored this bill alongside my office, also noted that, and I quote, "Resources, if needed, can be allocated accordingly to implement this legislation should it become public law," unquote. As I stated at the hearing, Madam Speaker, I am encouraged with the full support of CPS, the Bureau of Women's Affairs, and the bill's 11 cosponsors, that the administration will do what is necessary to ensure that adequate resources are deployed to CPS to this end. And in addition, should this bill become law and Guam elects to join Title 4E, the federal government will pay 50% of the costs of administering the Title 4E program, such as salaries of caseworkers and administrators, office space, et cetera, and also 75% of the training costs associated with the program. Again, I raise this point simply to note that staff costs may be offset by future federal funding through Title 4E, but that is ultimately dependent on public health applying for this program, which they indicated they are very interested and willing to do. Madam Speaker, following the hearing, my office worked with the Committee on Health to clearly define the circumstances from which reasonable efforts to reunify a parent or guardian with the child shall not be required. This includes language which makes it absolutely clear that aggravated circumstances in section 13301.2A1 are determined by a finding of clear and convincing evidence, consistent with the remainder of the bill, as well as new language that includes failure to protect a child. Under this amended version, failure to protect a child from abandonment, torture, sexual abuse, chronic or severe abuse, or chronic or severe neglect is also considered as aggravated circumstances if the parent or guardian demonstrated depraved indifference to human life. In addition, Bill 299 was further amended to add language defining concurrent permanency planning, which was modeled after Colorado statute. The new language in 13301.1 states that concurrent planning shall mean the simultaneous preparation of plans to, one, assist members of the child's family in completing a service plan pursuant to 19GCA Section 13304, that when completed successfully will allow the child to return home safely, and, two, to place the child in a setting that will become the child's permanent home if such members of the child's family are unable to successfully complete the service plan. In closing, Madam Speaker, Bill 299 is not simply a string of edits to our Child Protective Act. It is a fundamental change, a paradigm shift. It represents new standards in Guam's Child Protective Act that prioritizes the health and safety of the child, and may open the door for greater federal funding, which we recognize as being sorely needed to facilitate our efforts to further assist our children on Guam. Sidoos Maasi.
On the motion, on the bill, is there anyone who would like to be recognized? The bill? If not, then the sponsor may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I sincerely look forward to the passage of Bill 299-36, and I thank my sponsors for their support on this bill. At this time, I'd also like to add the remaining members of the body as cosponsors, to include Senators Brown, Tai DeGui, and Rigel. And I just want to also note that this was that measure that started in my office nearly four years ago, with practitioners and foster parents of children in need with special needs, guardians and wards expressing a void, and also pointing out that we had circumstance, we had in our books a gap where certain circumstances would negate parental rights in every jurisdiction across the U.S., every state and the territories, and that Guam was the only one that didn't have these sets of circumstances in their books that would negate parental rights. And so, in some ways, it seems that we were archaic. And so, in some ways, it seems that we were archaic in that way, and also, a lot of the issues that were being brought up with the child, with the child foster system needed help. So, I'm very glad that this is the last of the bills that I'll be introducing as my, in my capacity as a senator, because I think that this is the one that perhaps took the longest and was the hardest-fought issue. And I sincerely thank everyone for their efforts in this, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, Child Protective Services, all the practitioners, the guardians who spoke with me, the Public Defender Service Corporation, the Attorney General's Office, your committee, Madam Speaker, and all of my cosponsors who understood that finally, finally, we're going to take a hold and figure out how to best fill those gaps and truly make the foster care system, the provisions for support of foster care children, and support of those children with special needs beyond foster care and into adoption, continue by bringing us closer to funding eligibility with Title IV Social Security Act. So, Sidus Maasi, and I again express my gratitude, and I move that we place Bill 299-36 LS into the third reading voting file.
Sorry, on the motion to add cosponsors, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. On the motion to place the bill on the third reading file as amended, is there any objection? Bill number 299-36 LS is amended by the committee and further amended on the floor. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Now, Bill 334-36.
We are now on Bill 334-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. I'd like to offer the floor to the sponsor of the bill, Speaker Turloki.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move Bill number 334-36 COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, placed on the third reading, and I'd like to speak on that motion.
Please proceed.
So, Bill number 334 was introduced pursuant to the mandate set forth in Public Law 36-68, where the Department of Public Health and Social Services was to promulgate rules and regulations for all child placement agencies. These proposed rules and regulations set the minimum standards governing the granting, revocation, refusal, and suspension of licenses for a child placement agency and the operation of a child placement agency. Public Law 36-68 also required the Department of Public Health and Social Services to transmit the rules and regulations to the Legislative Committee with subject-mannered jurisdiction within the required 180-day timeframe that was required by this law, and that such rules and regulations shall be exempt from the provisions of the administrative adjudication law, provided that at least one public hearing is held by the Legislative Committee with subject-mannered jurisdiction.
I'm sorry, not...
Madam Chair, there's a lot of noise.
Yes, Speaker, apologies for the interruption. We don't have the bill online, and so senators are looking for the bill at this time if we can take a moment's recess.
I believe it is online, Madam Chair.
Colleagues, you can find the bill that we are currently on in the Google Drive. Speaker Turloki, you are recognized.
Just, if I may have my time back, maybe I will begin again, at least. Thank you. So, again, this bill was introduced to approve the rules and regulations for child placement agencies, which would govern the granting, revocation, refusal, and suspension of licenses for these child placement agencies and the operation of the child placement agencies. We were required to have one public hearing, the Oversight Committee, which was ours, Public Health, and that was placed into the prior law, quote, "to ensure transparency, permit public participation therein, and provide a method of making rules readily accessible to the public," unquote, and that no rule shall be effective until, after elehazlatu in guahan, quote, "by passage of a bill that is enacted into law, approves, disapproves, or amends any rule," unquote. So, that's what we're attempting to do here. The proposed rules and regulations were received by the Office of the Speaker on June 24, 2022, and forwarded to the Committee on Rules for processing. The Committee on Rules referred the proposed rules and regulations to the Committee on Health on September 1, 2022. These rules and regulations for child placement agencies are crucial because currently, adoption agencies are licensed through the Department of Revenue and Taxation without standard eligibility requirements and regulatory controls in the law set by the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Furthermore, there are bills that are now law that authorize independent adoption agencies to play key roles in the foster placement and adoption of newborns and children, prior to any rules and regulations for these agencies. Public Law 36-69, relative to the streamlining adoption policies and procedures, and Public Law 36-40 expanded the Newborn Infant Safe Haven Act. Bill number 334-36 was introduced on September 9, 2022, after it was referred to our committee, and a hearing was held on September 20, 2022. I want to thank the Bureau of Social Services Administration, or BOSA, at the Department of Public Health for their work on these rules and regulations, and this took significant work on their part, and I know that they worked closely with their counterparts in Region 9 in order to come up with these rules. They took great care to ensure that they consider the unique circumstances of our island community, especially with concerns raised during public hearings on the earlier laws passed, to safeguard against the vulnerabilities in the Pacific to human trafficking. They worked with their federal partners and modeled the child placement agency licensure standards after Arizona, a border state in the mainland with very thorough requirements. Arizona, much like Guam, is a gateway area where vulnerable populations are at high risk for human trafficking. Southern Asia is one of the top regions with the most child sex trafficking cases. Around 50% of the cases in the region involve adolescents. The committee has received testimony by Ohala Adoptions criticizing these standards and recommending that we model standards from Missouri. However, it's my assessment that those standards are less stringent, and given our special circumstances and vulnerabilities, I did not agree with that recommendation. Another criticism was relative to the professional and educational requirements set by BOSA for a child placing agency administrator, a social services director, and social workers. According to BOSA, the qualification requirements were taken from the Department of Administration's job specs, which require that adoption agency administrator qualification requirements mimics the human services program administrator. The social services director qualification requirements mimic social service supervisor 1 position specifications, and the social worker qualification requirements mimic social worker 3 qualifications. I agree with these standards, as they are what we require now for someone working in these capacities. During the hearing, the Department of Public Health recognized that the mandate to develop additional regulations for foster care and therapeutic foster care providers, which they are also required to provide to the legislature. According to the Department of Public Health and Social Services, as the goal of adoption is very different from that of foster care, the requirements for providers of foster care services that they must meet are very different, and so they would be separate from this bill. The committee made several amendments to the bill in committee in collaboration with the Department of Public Health and Social Services to address concerns by committee members and others who attended the public hearing as follows. The definition of child protective services on page 4 was removed due to committee concern that the proposed definition conflicted with the current definition of CPS in Guam law. The definition of person amended from, was amended from meaning, quote, "a corporation, company, partnership, firm, association, or society," as well as natural person, to, quote, "a human being regarded as an individual," unquote, per the concerns of the committee. Section 04D, relative to the Home Evaluation and Placement Services, Adoption Units Authority, and the criteria for denial or licensure was amended from "may deny" to "shall deny" for the following reasons. One, a child placing agency for the purpose of adoption applicants that had a license revoked by any state or foreign country. An agency that employs personnel whose fingerprint background check shows that the employee has been convicted of or is awaiting trial on an offense. An agency that does not comply with one or more of the standards listed in subsection C. An agency that has intentionally or recklessly jeopardized the well-being of its client. An agency that has a history or pattern of violations of applicable adoption statutes or rules. So, those were the criteria. Section 30A, relative to the reasonableness of adoption fees, was also amended to clarify reasonableness. The Department of Public Health and Social Services proposed an amendment, adding that a child placing agency for the purpose of adoption shall not charge a client more than $3,000 for any applicable fees or services. This amount is based on estimates of what current adoption agencies practicing on Guam Section 32C, relative to conducting a compliance audit upon receipt of complaints against a child placing agency, was amended from "may conduct a compliance audit" to "shall conduct a compliance audit." So, I welcome any questions by my colleagues, but I urge my colleagues to please support the swift passage of these rules and regulations. We have tried to treat them with utmost priority, and so that they can be put into law to protect the rights of children in foster care, those in the process of being adopted, and children's birth parents or guardians, and to ensure adoption services resulting in the humane placement for each child. This is the stated mission in the rules and regulations, so I ask for your support. Sidus Maasi, Madam Speaker.
Sidus Maasi, Madam Speaker. On the bill, Bill number 334-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. Anyone wishing to speak on the bill? On the bill? On the bill, Senator Taidegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of Bill 334. It's unfortunate that this bill is kind of like the cart before the horse scenario, and wish that we had gotten this sooner. It's kind of ironic that we found out during the public hearing that the bill was actually, the rules and regulations were actually given to the Legislature three months prior to September, that when the speaker finally received it. I don't know why it was delayed that long, for whatever reason, and it was very disappointing because something as important as this was sitting in the Committee on Rules for the longest time before finally referring it. But we're here today on these rules and regulations that are desperately needed. I mean, I attended that public hearing. Quite a bit of information was brought up, and there was discussions thoroughly on each rules and regs. And I'm glad that the speaker, I mean, for the listening audience, this committee report is over 400 pages long, 400 pages long. So, there was a lot of thought and effort put into this. And I'd like to first commend, you know, the Department of Public Health and Social Services for doing their due diligence. I mean, it took them quite a bit of time to put it together, but of course, it was delayed on our end. I had a couple of questions too, Madam Speaker. If I could ask the author of the legislation...
Please state your question.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the question I have to the author has to do with insurance coverage, liability amount. It was discussed during the public hearing that these adoption agencies, or anybody dealing with adoptions as a company, should have some type of liability insurance. And so, my question is, was it ever addressed in the bill? Our concern is why there wasn't a certain limit that was placed in that section of the rules and regulations of a requirement for an adoption agency.
Madam Speaker, do you yield to the question?
Yes, my request is that that concern was not addressed in the amended bill. There was no language that we were able to come up with, with the help of Public Health. So, we did any other concerns that are not addressed in this current rules, bill that passes the rules and regulations. Public Health is still allowed to continue to amend these rules and regulations as they fit through the administrative adjudication law.
Thank you for that. Just one other question, and the safekeeping of documents. There was a discussion about all documents should be given to the Department of Public Health and Social Services from these agencies that conduct adoptions for safekeeping. So, I know that the speaker mentioned that these rules and regs can be adjusted as they move forward, but this is something very important, you know, providing that kind of information and data. You never know when a child reaches the age of 20, you want additional information, or if there's something that's medically, a medical issue, then they need to find, you know, their biological parents for any kind of reason like that. I'm just wondering if there is something in the legislation that provides all information documentation by these insurance, I mean, by these adoption agencies to provide that information to Department of Public Health and Social Services for safekeeping?
I know that there is extensive language in the rules and regulations attached to the bill regarding the files, the records, the adoption records, what has to be in them, and that these shall be maintained. I think it's in a separate section that it also allows, of course, Public Health and Social Services access to those files. and social services access to those files at any time.
Thank you for that, to the author of the legislation. Again, I stand in full support of Bill 334 and like to thank her for continuing this
I have nothing further to add, just to ask my colleagues for their support and thank
effort and moving forward and providing that process that was needed at the very beginning
my colleague Senator Taitegui for her support and make a motion that she be added as a
to ensure the safety and welfare of our most vulnerable children, and that we are not
cosponsor.
On the motion to add Senator Taitegui as a cosponsor to the bill, are there any objections?
going to be reactive, but more than proactive, in a situation that could be very devastating
Hearing none, motion passes.
I move that the Bill Number 334-36COR is amended by the Committee on Health, Land,
to our island, as it was in the Marshall Islands, and even places like the other states where
Justice, and Culture and further amended on the floor be added to the third reading file.
On the motion to add the bill to the third reading file, are there any objections?
human trafficking is still being dealt with to this day.
Hearing none, motion passes.
So I’m glad that the rules and regs that were proffered were one of the most rigorous rules and regulations, just to ensure that safety of our island. Our children deserve that. Thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taitegui. On the bill, Bill Number 334-36COR, as amended by the committee. On the bill? Speaker Terlahi may close.
Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have nothing further to add, just to ask my colleagues for their support and thank my colleague Senator Taitegui for her support and make a motion that she be added as a cosponsor.
On the motion to add Senator Taitegui as a cosponsor to the bill, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion passes.
I move that the Bill Number 334-36COR is amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture and further amended on the floor be added to the third reading file.
On the motion to add the bill to the third reading file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion passes.
Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to set aside Bill 355-36 above 291. Yeah.
On the motion to place Bill Number 355-36COR to right above Bill Number 291-36 on the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We’re now on Bill Number 346-36LS. Senator Jose Pito Terlahi, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I’ve been waiting for this for the longest time, and I want to thank all of my colleagues for joining us this morning. Madam Speaker, I rise this morning to ask for the support of all of my colleagues to allow Bill Number 346-36LS to be placed on the third reading file, and I would like to discuss it.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, I introduce Bill 346-36LS so it can be passed into law and allow our public sector employees the opportunity to have a better accrued rate for their retirement plans and to allow our public safety officers the opportunity to enjoy the same type of retirement benefits their counterparts in other states and territory enjoy, the chance to retire and spend time with their families at the age of 55 with 25 years of service. This bill has been my main focus over this past term as I see the importance to the benefits for law enforcement agencies to increase recruitment, improve retention, and morale for those employees. For far too long, the Governor of Guam has been spending its precious resources to recruit and train officers only to lose them to federal law enforcement agencies while leaving our own agencies with a shortage of officers. Madam Speaker, this has got to end, and of course, wage were addressed when we worked with the governor and our fiscal team to provide an 18% raise for law enforcement officers, but the retirement component is unnecessary ongoing forward. Last year, Elas Latura asked the Retirement Fund to conduct an actuary study to determine the feasibility of allowing these officers to retire early and how it would affect the funds. At the same time, we requested, also requested to ask if the funds could be improved or to improve benefits for everyone in government service so we could see if we could improve the retirement benefit for the employees of the Governor of Guam. The actuary group, Melina, in San Francisco, did the study, a worldwide actuary company that came out with a formula that allows, that allowed us to not only to allow law enforcement officers early retirement, but to allow all government employees to migrate to the improved DB 1.75 and get a higher accrued rate after the first 25 years of service. The cost of this improvement is nominal at 0, at 0.014% or about $235,000 a year, a small price to pay to improve the lives of many people. This cost was agreed upon by BBMR in the fiscal note and provided to the committee prior to the public hearing of this bill. Colleagues, this bill would help so many government employees or government service to live a better life, and as my last piece of legislation prior to my retirement from the August body. And I humbly ask for your support to place Bill Number 36, Number 346-36 on the voting file, the third reading voting file, and pass this bill so all our hardworking employees can benefit Sides, Massey. And Madam Speaker, I would like to make an amendment to this bill. I would like to make an amendment on line 12, that’s 14, page 8.
All right, the amendment should be on the drive. Please proceed.
Notwithstanding the foregoing portion of this, of section 8503(c), and notwithstanding the otherwise applicable retirement requirement under section 8119, 28120.1, or other successor provisions, a defined benefit 1.75 plan, member who is a member, who is a member of the uniform personnel and who is designated investigator at the Attorney General’s Office, who are non-uniform, who is an active employee on or after January 1, 2024, may retire on a service retirement annuity under the Retirement Fund, under written application and approval by the Board, provided the Sats member should have either attained at least 55 years of service, or 55 years of age, and completed 25 years of service, or attained at least 57 years of age and completed five years, five years of service. The retirement annuity for Sats members should not be subject to the reduction which is described in the preceding paragraph. In addition to that, Madam Speaker, I would like to add Senator Chris Duenias as one of the cosponsors of this bill. Thank you very much.
We’ll take the amendment separately. First, on the amendment to add Senator Chris Duenias as a cosponsor, is there any objection? No objection, motion carries. And on the amendment to line 12 to 14, page 8, to add the words, or who is a designated investigator at the Office of the Attorney General, to that paragraph. Is there anyone who’d like to speak on that amendment? Senator Sinagusti, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I don’t have any objection to the amendment. I only, maybe the author may want to reconsider that and just include all that are part of the post, because on the post, you have a bunch of law enforcement people, and many of them are like the investigators and the other folks, and that’s something we may want, he may want to consider, but I have no objection to it, just that it kind of like, it hits on, it doesn’t cover all law enforcement. That’s the only thing I’m concerned, because the agent’s office are law enforcement under the post. I just wanted maybe to consider that, and as we go along, maybe you’ll add it. Thank you. But I am in support of the bill, period, in supporting law enforcement. Thank you.
On the amendment, Senator Taitegui, you are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I was attending the public hearing on this legislation, and it was a disappointment because we did not have Department of Retirement there to testify during the public hearing. We had many questions to ask, and one of them is like the cost. How much is this going to cost the government of Guam? And that brings me to second part of what this bill, without a fiscal note, tells us, is this going to affect the amount that we have to now contribute to retirement? So I have, you know, a lot of questions on this legislation, and if I can get one minute recess to verify why there’s no fiscal note for this, and if it does affect how much money is given to our retirement, then I think we need to visit that first before moving forward.
Just a point of information that when we were on the committee of the whole, the retirement folks was here, or the individual was here, the director, and she was very specific when the question was asked by, if I’m correct, the author of this bill, that said that all future contribution will offset the impact. Now, not unless we want to ask the Retirement Fund to give us that in writing to cover that. I’m just saying that that’s what she said that I can remember when we were on the committee of the whole, when we were dealing with the COLA. They asked a question about how would the impact, and that’s what the author asked. And maybe we need to rewind that part and maybe replay it to all our colleagues so that we can get an answer. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Sinagusti, you’re saying that that was testimony at the public hearing?
No. That was testimony on our committee of the whole when we were discussing the COLA. And the author of this bill asked that question, what would the impact be? And if we want, can rewind the footage and just cover it. And if it doesn’t answer, then of course we call her.
Thank you, Senator, for the point of information. Senator Taitegui, you have the floor on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just the word “impact,” it’s already a, you know, red flag on the field that this will impact, and we don’t have any of that information. So, you know, I asked just for a one-minute recess to determine, one, if this bill should be heard in the committee of the whole rather than, you know, just during a regular session. If I could have one minute, and if not, then I, you know, I know that Senator Sinagusti is probably trying to get some information right now, Madam Speaker, to speed up the process on the questions I have. There he is. So if I could just have one minute? Or I’ll object, you know, the point is that I think this, you know, we have to determine whether this is going to be an impact to our general fund, if we’re going to have to increase any kind of expenditures to the Retirement Fund. That’s my question, and that’s my biggest concern. Here we are, this bill that was introduced did not include additional law enforcement. Now we’re including, because the Attorney General’s Office showed up during the public hearing and asked to be included, and then now we’re hearing from this body that we should include all, everyone that’s under law enforcement. So we just need to make sure that we really look into this and know the true impact that it’ll have on our retirement. I understand the intent of the legislation, you know, allowing these individuals to retire sooner than later, but we really need to, just to clarify this, just a little bit further. Madam Speaker, if I could just have one minute, and please time me on this if I don’t come back.
One-minute recess. One-minute recess. We're back from recess. Senator Titigui, you have the floor.
Since this was passed here, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to discuss with my colleagues and their concerns, at least to hear what Rev. Tax, I mean Retirement, has to say. So I'd like to make a motion at this time to go into the committee of the whole to receive Retirement Company because they weren't present during the public hearing and would like to have them here and go into the committee of the whole for that purpose.
On the motion, Madam Speaker, on the motion?
I just have a point of information I'd like to add. I just received, the Retirement Fund actually did submit in writing a position statement saying, and I believe it should be on the committee report if I'm not mistaken, the Retirement Fund's statement says that the Gov. Guam Retirement Fund Board of Trustees hereby submits its position statement in support of Bill Number 346-36, LS, with the expectation that the government of Guam will continue to make required contributions to the Retirement Fund. And then there's, it goes on after that. But that's something we could take a look at that's in the committee report.
Can you clarify which page? I have 22 pages in the committee report.
I appreciate that, Madam Speaker, but I also have to say that, you know, not being there during a public hearing on a bill such as this and not being able to ask them questions on top of what they provided us, you know, it doesn't do us, you know, to be able to, you know, decide on this bill with good conscience moving forward. And that's, I think, what this body needs to do is make sure everything is covered. So I ask again, my colleagues, for a motion.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Richel, on the point of information?
Yes, just on the request for what page it's on on the committee report, it's on page 24.
All right, Senator Titigui, on the motion. So on the motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. So that's a motion to go into committee of the whole. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to motion that we recess until Friday at 9:00 a.m., anticipating the arrival of the members of the Retirement Fund in the committee of the whole. Thank you, Madam Speaker. The motion is to recess until Friday at 9:00 a.m. to anticipate the committee of the whole with members of the Retirement Board and the Retirement Agency so that we can discuss the details of this bill.
All right, there's a motion to recess until Friday at 9:00 a.m. where we resolve into committee of the whole with the representatives from the Retirement Fund. Is there any objection to that motion? Pardon?
And also, Madam Speaker, just to clarify, the members that we would like for the panel, that we would like in the panel to be present would be members of also Department of Administration.
All right, and so to add to the motion that the Department of Administration shall also be added to the panel, is there any objection to the motion to recess until Friday at 9:00 a.m. to resolve into committee of the whole for Bill 346-36? Any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Or recess until Friday 9:00 a.m.